Kind of call the meeting to order. Go ahead, call the roll.
Two Hill.
Here.
Esti.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Okay, council, are there any changes to the agenda? I have one small change. Do you have any other changes tonight?
Yes, mayor, I have one. Trying to find it on the agenda here real quick. I'd like to change the action item for the loan consideration. For the, where am I looking? Where is it exactly?
Second page. Fourth of ten.
The resolution for consideration of authorization of loan and development agreement with Fairfield Economic Development Association to an action item, or for a public hearing on next Monday.
You want to strike it from the agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
He wants to change the resolution to an action item to set up a public hearing or to set a special meeting. Both?
Well, it'd be, yes. It'd be a meeting with, for a public, yes.
Setting a public hearing for Monday.
Monday, the, what is it, the fifteenth? Is that right?
Yeah.
Can be a short meeting and we just have to give four days' published notice.
Right.
And what time are you suggesting?
Seven o'clock.
Seven PM. Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any discussion? No, please call the roll. Two Hill.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Esti.
Yes.
Okay, great. And then I have one small, under public appearances, we're going to add Mark Dwyer from Sierra Club. For a very short, thank you. Okay, anything else? If not, we will move on to swearing in. We have a new officer to swear in, yay. It's always nice. This might as well. Okay, I'm going to stand here, right here in the middle, so they can all see you. And raise your right hand. And you'll repeat after me. I, Braden Nelson.
I, Braden Nielsen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge, discharge all duties of police officer.
Discharge all duties of a police officer.
In the city of Fairfield as now.
In the city of Fairfield as of now.
Or hereafter required by law.
Or hereafter as required by law.
Thank you. And congratulations, welcome aboard. We're going to let Mr. Nielsen say more than two sentences about himself and where he comes from and where he grew up and a little background.
Thank you, mayor. I will try to do at least three sentences here. Officer Braden Nielsen here. I'm originally from Washington, Iowa, twenty-three years old. Did a few years of schooling. Baseball was my sport, so if there's any baseball fans here, would love to talk with you. Am very thankful for everyone here. Everybody's been super welcoming in the community. I haven't spent a whole lot of time down here, so look forward to getting to know everybody in the community. And I'm thankful for the opportunity to serve the city of Fairfield.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we'll move on to the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes of the April seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three special council meeting. Approval of the minutes of April nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three special council meeting. Approval of the minutes of the April twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three council meeting. Approval of the April twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three payroll in the amount of one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars and ninety-one cents. Approval of the April twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three special payroll in the amount of five thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars and eighty-four cents. Acceptance of the environmental and franchise utility committee minutes. Resolution of employment in the park and recreation department. Approval of liquor license for everybody's Whole Foods. Casey's General Store, number thirty-three, twenty-seven South. Hy-Vee and La Note LLC. Approval of total claims in the amount of four hundred and seventy-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars and forty-one cents. There were no claims larger than seventy-five thousand. So I take a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Move by Rasmussen.
Second.
Second by Ham. Any discussion?
I reviewed all the claims and everything seems to be in order, so I would recommend approval. Just had one question for Rebecca about that one bill that, is that included?
No, so we pulled that out, so.
So I recommend approval of all the claims listed.
Okay, go ahead and call the roll. Rasmussen.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Esti.
Yes.
Two Hill.
Yes.
Thank you. We will go to public appearances first, Mark Dwyer.
I just want to thank the mayor and the city council for the strong support you gave us, financial and otherwise, for the Inflation Reduction Act funding workshop that we did last Friday at the fairgrounds. It was a huge success. I think it was very useful for the people that went. We ended up with about a hundred and sixty people, and I think it really reflected really well on Fairfield. So thank you very much. I think we can all be proud of that. Mayor Boyer was there. Thank you for hosting. And Councilman Gandy was there, maybe, and Doug Flornoy was there. So I think it was a great success. Thank you.
We know it's a success because not only the number of people, but they've been asked to do it around the state. In every corner. But I'm not sure they're going to take that on, but maybe they can provide a template to all those corners anyway. It was, it was very well attended and we thank you for all the hours that y'all put into it. So, thank you. Next, Samantha Lang, Greater Jefferson County Fair, are you here?
Yes. Hi. First, Samantha, I want to apologize for missing the last meeting. I just blew it off completely, so. And then, secondly, it's, it's going to be a three strikes, you're out. I forgot my second page that actually had the route and my highlighter never went through. So I have copies, if, if that's acceptable to hand out. There has been a route change since years past due to the high school parking lot getting resurfaced this summer over this time. So we have received approval for the civic center and from the supervisors to use the courthouse if we need for overflow parking. So this would take place on Tuesday, June twentieth. The lineup's at five PM and the parade starts at six. We would start at the civic center marked here and we're going to head west on Hempstead. South on B Street and then, or, I'm sorry, let me start over. How about east on Hempstead, south on B Street, east on, or west on Broadway and then back north on Nor, on North Main and then to meet there back at the civic center again. So, a little bit of a change since years past.
Any questions, council? Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Move by Anderson, second by Flornoy. Any discussion? No, please call the roll. Anderson.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Esti.
Yes.
Two Hill.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Okay, Carnegie Museum. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck with the parade.
Thank you.
Blocking off lane and parking space. Anybody here for Carnegie? Okay. Do you kind of know what's going on here? You want to?
I only know just what is, they want to shut down one lane in the parking spaces in front of Carnegie from the alley to Washington.
Oh, this is for business after hours.
Yes.
When is the business after hours that they're wanting?
I'm hoping it says at the top. August tenth.
Yes.
Should we table this so he can come back and talk?
That's up to you.
It's from five to seven?
Four to seven.
Four to seven.
Four to seven. I feel like we can approve it, so I would make the motion to approve it.
Okay. Move by Flornoy.
Second.
Second by Two Hill. Any discussion? Go ahead and call the roll. Flornoy.
Yes.
Two Hill.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Esti.
Yes.
Okay, next is Rachel Morgan, Morgan Tree Service. This is contractor use of compost site.
Yeah, hi. My name's Rachel Morgan and excuse my attire, I just came from coaching my son's T-well team. So, yeah, my husband and I own Morgan Tree Care and over the past few weeks, we've been going to the compost site to get mulch to use, which we've had permission for, like anybody can go and do that, even contractors. However, we have been seeing a lot of other contractors, both tree services and lawn care services dumping at the compost site. My husband, Eli, has been here before to a city council meeting in years past, asking about this, you know, can he do that? He was denied doing that. So we found other routes of doing that. We actually ended up buying our own property so that we could go out and dump on our own property and have no problems. So, I'm here because, I'm confused, not confused. I mean, so you have taxpayers paying, and I, I asked for a copy of the expense report from Joe, and so he provided that for me. So our taxpayers are paying for the compost site to be maintained. So, I don't know if you guys received that, but just for the tub grinder alone in twenty-twenty-three to date was almost twelve thousand dollars. So that's to be able to have mulch. So, I don't know how quickly the, the citizens of Fairfield go through the mulch, but the, the contractors that are dumping there are contributing to the costs of having to push everything in, that much more stuff to tub grind into mulch, all of that. And then, on the flip side, you have other contractors who do not use it, but then they have to increase their rate to be able to, like for us, take our brush out of town to where we go. So, I'm wondering if there's a resolution whether contractors can pay to be able to dump there or if there is a penalty. We've seen, like I said, we've seen some going there and nobody seems to be getting in trouble. So I'm just wondering if there's some sort of solution that we can come to so that it's fair for everybody, but most importantly, so that the citizens of Fairfield aren't having to pay double, if that makes sense? So.
Rachel, do you live in the town?
I don't.
You live out, out in the county?
I do.
Okay.
Yep. But the business is a business of Fairfield, so.
Yes.
I was told it was okay to come.
Most of your business?
No, no, that's fine.
Most of your business is in town?
Correct, yep.
Okay. My recollection is they're not allowed to dump there if you're a contractor.
Correct. Are you asking him or me? I know.
Anybody who remembers, like, from my recollection.
That's my understanding as well, yeah.
Correct, yep.
And there was some debate about whether to allow contractors or not to dump there, and it was decided against years ago.
Right, right.
I'm certainly wanting to reconsider the question.
Okay.
Do you want to take it to committee? I mean, I don't, I think we do have problems with other contractors taking advantage of the situation.
Right, and that's the thing, and it's not just taking adv, it's taking advantage of the citizens of Fairfield.
Right.
That's the thing for me, so.
And I appreciate your honesty.
Right.
Of not doing that.
Right, well, and it's not me like coming like, oh, well, they're doing it and we're not. It's, the citizens of Fairfield are paying for other companies to come there and, you know, it's contributing to the cost.
Right.
So.
And the question is, is there amount of space and to maintain that much dumping?
Yes, exactly, so.
We've got, I think we've got quite a bit more land behind that, too.
Yeah.
I'm sure there's enough to handle it. We can always revisit it if we get overwhelmed.
Right, yeah, and it's, I mean, more like, you're going to have to have the tub grinder come in that much, that much more to grind everything up so that you don't get piles stacked up and, you know what I mean?
But you're suggesting like buying a fee or a license to be able to do it for a contractor.
Yeah, yeah, or on the flip side.
That makes sense, yeah.
Yeah, if you get a penalty.
So should we move this to environmental?
Yeah, I'd make motion move to environmental and franchise.
Okay.
Second.
Great, thank you. Move by Flornoy, second by Anderson. Any other discussion? Then you guys can consider if you want to charge a fee or whatever, so.
You can attend the meeting if you want. Yeah, it's open.
So where will this be?
They'll, they'll post it when, when they'll set it.
Okay.
So, but it's open if you wish to attend.
Where will I find it? On the website?
We'll try to do soon because the season's coming up for doing all this trimming, so.
So, just on the city hall website?
Yeah, and maybe, Elizabeth, can you let her know when that is?
Yeah, I can, I don't know, I don't have any contact information for you. Do, is that something that we collect?
It's on.
It's on there?
Yeah.
All right, great.
Her cell's on this.
Okay, great.
Application, so if you wouldn't mind letting her know so she can have the heads up. That'd be great.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, Ms. Morgan? It might be useful between now and our meeting for you to get an idea of how much you would be dumping in a year.
Okay.
Just so we have an idea. I think I asked Eli about that before.
Yes, I can do that. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is, oh, oh, sorry, I didn't. Yeah, any other discussion? Go ahead and call the roll. Flornoy.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Esti.
Yes.
Two Hill.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Okay, next up is Shanaz Kreider. This is related to the volunteer center and the railroad underpass improvements. She has an update and, go ahead.
As a matter of fact, I'm here to thank you guys for taking this long to all talk again about the issue because as I was looking at the record, it was September of last year when Chad, the artist, came to me and said, we want to do, do this mural. And I said, okay, I'll go to the mirror and I'll go to see, but, and it's been, say, over six months that you've known about it. But honestly, I thank you because during this time that you didn't do anything, people have come to us and asked about so many different things. And they've had so many suggestions and about the cost, about the colors, about the paint, where we're doing it, how, about the liabilities, insurance, all of this stuff. Now, a few experts also came to us and gave their opinions. And one of the expert opinion, my committee, Chad and I have been thinking about for a while that we kind of agree with them. The original way that we were going to do this mural was paint on concrete, of course, cleaning and, and painting, putting the paint, best paint and then seal it and all of that stuff. That would have, that would cost us about around fifty thousand dollars. And, and that's true because I did a cost analysis of everything. So, and it would take about four months to do it because we're limited to the months of the year. And when the train goes by, when it's rain or windy, we can't get up there and paint and do all of that stuff. So this other solution or option that came up, it takes twice as much the cost. It would cost about, about more or less a hundred thousand, right? The mural that we were going to paint would last about nineteen, twenty years. That's, that's stretching it. And it would need repair and freshen up and everything. The one that costs twice as much lasts four times as long, about eighty to ninety years. And if you do a cost effectiveness, business-wise, it's worth looking at it. And we are seriously looking at it. And we, we want to go with that. I just wanted you to know that this is good sometimes that you take your time to make a decision. So, and the other factor here is that it takes, as I said, it takes longer to do this second project, the second way that we are going to do it. But the advantage is that the, most of the work is done in the shop. And there is only maybe one month that we will install everything on that overpass. So, the liability, the real liability, of course, we have to take care of insurance and possibilities and that's obvious. But the real liability goes down because instead of four months being out there and painting and we would just do it in a month because all, everything is ready in the shop and we have to install it. So, so what you're going to vote on hopefully tonight is you're taking a project that costs about a hundred thousand, which you probably will not pay for unless you want to give us a grant sometime. But we'll raise the money for it. It lasts four times as long, about eighty, ninety years. And it looks much more prettier and the liability is a lot less. And that's what I personally, we've been concerned about in our committee in it being up there and trying to paint and.
So you're looking at putting this on tiles, correct?
Putting the what?
Putting the mural on a, on tiles.
Yes.
And then the tiles will be installed.
I was going to have Chad explain that, but Chad has four little kids and then the wife had to do something, so he had to take care of the kids and he's going to come later. But, yes, what we're doing, we're getting tiles and they cut the tiles and paint on it and then they fire it and, and then they put it on. And, and just doing the tiles takes months to do, so.
And so the agreement, which is our first action item, and we'll get to there, is the consideration of authorizing signature and agreement with BNSF Railroad. And we know, one of the things, just the council knows, one of the things that holds us up is the insurance.
Yes.
There was a lot of going back and forth and what was needed, et cetera.
Yes, definitely.
And that's basically been settled.
And that makes a lot of sense because one little thing can happen and, God forbid, the person who's working up there would get hurt and it's a lifetime thing. So we don't want that to happen. And I understand that the railroad, as cooperative as they've been to me personally, because I'm their contact person, they have every right to be concerned, they don't want the liability. So I think that's why I accepted that we do the insurance.
Yeah. So they will raise, it's still at a thousand, right? So it's a thousand dollars to add this rider.
Already did that.
Yes. Right? Yes. It's a thousand dollars to.
Insurance and I've already submitted.
Add the rider to the insurance to cover the volunteers to do this, so. Is there?
When's your expected installation date?
A bigger pardon?
When is your expected installation date?
I would say a year from this month.
So then you could apply for a lost grant next January for part of the funding.
We can, yes.
Through the city?
Yes.
Through the city.
Yes. What I'm giving you is an upgraded design of what we gave you before. Among all the comments that was made to us was, why don't you, what are you going to do with the top part? And because you're doing this wonderful, this wonderful work and it's so pretty, but that top part doesn't look. So I, I'm giving you a picture of both. And what we're doing, as a matter of fact, we're going to paint the rail also. So that's, that's just the spray paint and we'll take, that's who your records are you having. So.
Great, thank you. So we'll, when we get down to the action item, then we'll.
Okay.
Talk a little bit more.
Okay.
Okay? Great, thanks, Shanaz. Housing Task Force, Josh, I think you're going to come up?
Evening, council. Everybody should have a nicely bound, one hundred and ninety-one plus page housing study, so. I am going to read through line by line, so. You know, our, my plan tonight is to walk you through the highlights and then if you can't sleep, you can delve into the rest of the details, so. So I'm pleased to be here on behalf of the appointed City Housing Task Force this evening. What we're going to take a look at is two different things. There's actually two different studies in here this evening. There's a, what I characterize more as a qualitative study. And then the second part is a more of a quantitative lens. And I'm going to introduce the Housing Task Force here in a minute, those in attendance with us this evening. But this was a partnership that you, as the city council, engaged in with Iowa State University Extension, Community and Economic Development Arm. They are empowered by the Iowa Economic Development Authority to facilitate these community processes known as the Rural Housing Readiness Action Plan. Facilitated plans throughout the community, excuse me. So there's been a lot of partners. And if you want to turn to page two at the top, it starts at page, page numbers are at the top. The council appointed a fourteen, or I'm sorry, a twelve-person task force in late twenty-twenty-two. Mr. Paul Gandy from the council was appointed the chair as a city councilperson of the task force. Myself from Fairfield Economic Development is vice chair. Mayor Boyer, city, former city manager, Aaron Quaker. Aaron Kness from Iowa State Bank, representing the financial sector. Brian Hunger from Jefferson County Health Center, representing the healthcare sector. Chad Christensen from Agroindustrial Plastics and representing the Fairfield Manufacturers Association. Don Holting, who is with us tonight, representing being a developer and landlord on us in the back and one of our honored landlords in town. Mr. Carl Metcalf from Iowa State Bank. And just to comment on that, the reason we had two from Iowa State Bank was as a backup. One wasn't able to make it sometimes, so the other would, would make it. So Carl is representing the financial sector. Kristen Miller, representing real estate brokers from Miller Real Estate. Nick Graham is with us this evening. He's the chief technology officer at Cambridge Investment Research. And Tim Bowler from the school board, Fairfield Community School Board. In addition to the task force, there was many, many other partnerships that brought this study together, including Melanie from our engineering department here, provided incredible support and information to Iowa State University, in addition to Weston and Rebecca and John Morrissey, and also the county assessor. So what we're trying to convey is that there was a lot of people, it was a very diverse and divergent group. So it's been very smooth flowing and we've taken a total of what should have been six sessions and brought it down to three sessions. So we did a consolidation of the process, but went through the entire program. Essentially, what we did through this process is we, we can, the first session, first and second session was we conducted an educational workshop by Iowa State University. They came in, gave a lot of data about Fairfield, the housing situation in Fairfield, the economy. Also, in that same session, we had a visioning session based on that data. And then the second and third, I'm sorry, the third and fourth session combined, we did an action plan based on that data and the community feedback. we did an action plan based on that data and the community feedback. So in addition to the Housing Task Force and the city staff and the county assessor who supported this, we also got, we reached out and we wanted to get a significant amount of input from the community. So part of this process was a community survey. Our goal as a task force was to receive and engage about seven hundred to, seven hundred and fifty to a thousand people or responses. We're pleased to say that we exceeded our goal of having over twelve hundred responses with this housing study. We exceeded our goal by about sixty percent and it represents about twelve and a half percent of our population. Iowa State University was very surprised when the responses came in. They initially told us you will have about seven pages, typed about the size of comments. And I believe there is, I believe there's over sixty pages of responses. So a substantial part of your packet is actually the community responses. So in addition to the task force, the greater community was engaged. We put notices out in the newspaper, through the radio, local TV, and then also social media. Do you have any questions to this point? All right. So on page four, if you turn to page four, actually on page three, one of the most important points, what you'll notice throughout this study is that the work plan aligns with the city's twenty-year comprehensive plan known as the Fairfield Forever Plan. So at the top here, three trends related to housing and the comprehensive plan are to preserve existing older single-family homes in low-density residential neighborhoods. That's something in your comp plan and that aligns with ours. Also to protect the rights of renters and landlords in Fairfield. That's something in your twenty-year plan. And then also increase and support housing development at large, again, in your plan. So this is in alignment and doesn't deviate far from your goals. I promise I won't read through all of this. We're gonna jump through this, but there's a couple of highlights and Paul, please jump in. We kind of planned, if you feel like something's important that I'm missing at a certain point, please feel free to jump in.
Absolutely.
Or anybody on the task force can tap me on the shoulder.
You're doing great so far.
All right, great. So on page four, I won't go through them all, but I do encourage you to take a look at page four and five. They are kind of, they are some trends that we noticed from the community responses. And I noted a number of them, probably too many to mention, but these are solid trends noticed throughout the community responses. We do have a large number of people interested in being engaged in the housing topic. There's a lot of focus on making sure we have housing and we're focusing on options for folks with limited income and make sure that they're affordable and quality units and they're accessible. There's, in general, I'm just pointing out a few. There's interest in tiny homes or what's known as auxiliary dwelling units, which are almost like mother-in-law suites in the backyard. There's definitely a focus on creating a new subdivision in Fairfield for workforce housing. And I'm just pointing out a couple, all of them are important. There was an agreeance that home improvement programs equals more investment in our community. And a majority of the respondents, which was interesting, and you actually have data in your packet on the demographics of the respondents, but a majority of the respondents are currently paying nine hundred to twelve hundred dollars a month for housing. And it's not exclusively, but that is a trend that was on. If you want to turn to page six, we did not a SWOT analysis, but I didn't, I didn't know of this before, but a SWOT analysis, so strengths, weaknesses, outcomes of success, and also dangers of success, which was new to me. So it's nicely laid out. Many of the things we often talk about, the task force here was recognized as a strength, providing future facilitated leadership to the housing initiatives. We have a caring community, diversity, great amenities, good people working in our schools, strong capital, strong manufacturing sector, also strong blue and white color across the board sector, very philanthropic community, and strong infrastructure, i.e. wastewater.
Right, I mean, if I can add, just to give some context, this is really one more step in the direction of what the city's comprehensive plan sets forth. Housing is an absolutely key initiative for the city and will be going forward for quite some time. It's not only a key initiative and plank of our comprehensive study, our comprehensive plan, but also the city council has done a couple of visioning plans or visioning goal-setting sessions, if you will, the last two years. And again, housing comes up in our survey of each of us as a number one, a top priority. So this is an outgrowth of that. And I think what you'll see as Josh continues, that the city is taking, is making a tremendous number of steps, positive steps in this direction. For example, you speak of wastewater. There's, one of the challenges, I suspect, if you grow, sometimes people talk about, you've heard about a city outgrowing its infrastructure, particularly in the area of water, wastewater. Well, fortunately, because of our past good decisions, we have a waste, an infrastructure, a wastewater system, I believe, that's configured, that's new, and it's going to be configured so that it can accommodate twice, a city that's twice our size, something to that effect. So in terms of infrastructure in that regard, we are, we are ahead of the curve. So we can grow, we can act on this housing initiative, and there's an actual plan that Josh will speak about, and we have the infrastructure in place to accommodate it.
Thank you, Paul. Although it's not always fun focusing on some of our weaknesses for just a little bit of self-awareness, which can be helpful for us, old building infrastructure is pretty prevalent here. There's concerns in the community related to schools in general, deterioration of mobile home parks, although, Councilman Ham, we know you're putting a lot of attention on that. It was also noticed as a weakness of, maybe an imbalance of individualism, and I'll just expand on that, kind of maybe lacking the, we're all in this together, community mindset sometimes is, is not as strong as maybe the individualism. It was noted downtown buildings need some upgrade, some weaknesses. We're struggling to attract and retain young families, especially working families. And we're possibly in a community maintenance mode and not pushing the envelope. But what's more important is to take a look at and consider what outcomes of the success. And I think this is a really important area to focus on and have an agreeance on on what success looks like. Education on the community, on housing and community development, possibly creating a revolving loan fund for housing improvements and dilapidated housing, strengthen our code. You will notice a very strong trend in this. There was a lot of support for residential code and strengthening that. Utilizing infill lot opportunities, senior housing, cohousing, affordable housing, a new workforce housing subdivision, and engaging those public-private partnership opportunities as we go throughout this process. So you'll notice that there's a yellow tab, but what I would ask you to do is I want to jump to the back. You'll see a green tab. So I'm gonna have you jump back there and then we're gonna come back to the yellow tab. You go to the back, talks about, so we talked about our process, how we got to our process. What I was most excited for, and I didn't realize, it wasn't initially offered in our agreement with Iowa State University, was a quantitative study. So what I was hoping for was how, a number of how many homes we needed in Fairfield. We didn't realize that this wasn't part of our agreement, but Iowa State University had a tool and they went above and beyond and provided us what's known as the Fairfield Housing Construction Model. So that, just associate this as the quantitative approach or the quantitative study of these two different ones. Things that are considered in this quantitative study are affordability, population data, housing age, condition of our housing, and vacancy rate. So those, those are some trends throughout here. And if you want to turn, we're gonna get into some more interesting data to what's known as page three. We have a total of four thousand eight hundred housing units in Fairfield. About sixty-two percent of those are owner-occupied and about thirty-seven percent are renter-occupied. And also you'll notice a high percentage of vacant units in Fairfield also, which we are still asking questions on and we'll elaborate a little bit on in a minute. You turn to page four, and some of this information, actually, you may have seen in your Fairfield Forever Plan, but it fit really well to go into these studies. So on page four, a very eye-opening data point is the highest percentage of homes in Fairfield were built before nineteen thirty-nine. So almost thirty percent of our housing stock was built before nineteen thirty-nine and a majority before, the next step up was between nineteen forty and nineteen fifty-nine. So we are embarking, you know, continual, continuous aging housing, much of, which is a focus in this study to address some of that aging of housing. We have, if you bump down to the bottom of page four there, you'll see that we have a very high percentage and the highest percentage of our housing stock is single-family detached, single-family units with detached garages. And a lot of people had asked, it looked like we had, they were quite surprised by the multifamily units being a little bit higher percentage. But just note, like for ten units or more, those are the actual housing units. That's not a hundred and eighty-five buildings that are multifamily. That's a hundred and eighty-five multifamily apartment units or condo units. On page five, just to the right, this gives us a snapshot of a very interesting data point on the bottom. I'm skipping over the top of page five. That has to deal with mortgages filed in the community. And that's the only area that we're questioning to be certain at the top of page five. If that's accurate, it gives a snapshot of the cost of homes and the balance of mortgages in our community. But at the bottom of page five, that I think you as the council are gonna be very interested in, is in this process, we're very fortunate to also have been provided the number of substandard homes in this community. So there have been five hundred and sixty-six homes that are considered substandard in the city of Fairfield. That is about eleven percent, I'm sorry, twelve percent of our housing stock. Iowa State University was shocked. They do this around the state, they do this in metro areas, they do this in rural communities, but there's five hundred and sixty-six homes that have been considered substandard and they're all rated either below normal, poor, or very poor. We feel that the approach to identifying those was very fair. So what didn't happen, and what typically happens with housing studies, is we do what's called a windshield survey, where somebody drives around and judges a house based on a windshield survey. We did not do that. We used the county assessors classification of each home, which we felt was very objective. And so these classifications are actually using county assessor data, which we felt was very objective. There may be a few anomalies in that list. So we actually have homes and addresses, which I've communicated to the Housing Task Force. I do not feel that that document should be a public document, meaning a list of addresses. I wouldn't want to embarrass anybody. But I think what that, that list of homes with these different ratings could be used as is opportunities for engagement with neighborhoods that maybe have addresses lined up together. So if we're, if we're looking at a housing program in a certain neighborhood, then we can approach homeowners kind of collectively. I wouldn't want that list to embarrass or call anybody out. So that will be provided to the city, but I think it's probably helpful, it's just to be with the city staff. So there's actually a recommendation for each of these classifications. So of the four hundred and twenty-nine homes that are considered below normal, that's, that scored as six with the county assessor, those are potentially rehab opportunities. They just need some improvement. The homes that are classified as poor are likely properties that will need to be demolished in the next few years. And then those that are very poor definitely need to, or would be highly recommended to be demolished in the next few years. Do you have any questions down there? So the next page on page six, Melanie Carlson and Weston spent time with Iowa State University. And this is a snapshot, and I know you've seen this data, but it shows the efforts of the city addressing your nuisance issues. And that is taken into consideration in our work plan to continue to improve the city code related to residential structures and then also addressing nuisances. But as you can see, it was noted in here, the code enforcement officer was only brought on mid-year last year and you can see the incredible increase in nuisance issues addressed between twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. So page seven might be a little bit confusing. When you first look at this, it actually shows that we have an excess of housing units, which when I first looked at, I thought, how could that be? I'm not gonna be the expert to explain this, but it is explained how this was come to be. The reason it's showing we have an excess is that we have, as we mentioned, we have a high number of housing units that are substandard. And many aren't habitable. So there will be a recommendation at the end here, and I'll get you the total number of units that is going to be recommended to build in Fairfield. If you turn to page eight, this gives a snapshot of the income bands that we have for the residents of Fairfield. So we can kind of take a look at how many people are in different income bands. So at the bottom, we have a high percentage, but not the highest percentage, but we do have a high percentage of folks making less than ten thousand dollars a year. And if you go down that column, you'll see a couple of bolded areas, which will be higher areas of focus. But the thirty-five to fifty thousand dollar range, we have about six hundred and sixteen people, for example, and you can go through those ranges. But on the right-hand side, in that same column, what you see is what can somebody in that income band typically afford. And using thirty percent, which is a very common calculation, thirty percent of somebody's adjusted gross income divided by twelve months, gives you the lower and upper end of what somebody in that income band could generally afford, whether it be rent or a mortgage. So on page nine, it's a little bit more detailed and it gives similar information. But just for example, and not just the only, we won't just be focusing on any of these areas or just one. But somebody, for example, or a household that's making thirty-five to fifty thousand dollars a year, the bottom range of what they could afford for rent would be, rent or mortgage would be eight hundred and seventy-five dollars a month and the upper end would be twelve hundred and fifty. Now, there's a little bit of clarification or distinction between homeowners, what's included in the homeowner's cost and renter's cost, and those are outlined in here. But things like principal and interest, property taxes, insurance, utilities, and maintenance. For renters, it's the rent, utilities, and insurance that are calculated. So what this is doing is it's starting to tee up what we could be focusing on in terms of new housing, whether it be low to moderate income, workforce, market rate, or custom homes. So it gives, I think there's a lot of ways that you can take this in a direction. I think all levels of housing could be addressed, but this gives some very specific data about what our current residents can afford if they're looking for new opportunities. All right. And then the last page of this study, it's a lot of text, but essentially, I'll pull it out for you. There's a recommendation based on our current housing stock, the number of houses that are considered substandard, and then also based on a one percent growth rate. So very conservatively, if we set a goal, which I think is very attainable, to grow by one percent over the next ten years, based on those two things, addressing the substandard homes and then also growing our population by one percent over the next ten years, the recommendation is to demolish one hundred homes over ten years. We realize that these are privately owned, there's a lot of conversations to happen. These are folks, you know, places of habitation. So those are very sensitive conversations, but some of these substandard homes do need to be demolished. And then replace those one hundred homes, one for one. In addition to the one hundred homes over the next ten years demoing and replacing them, they're also recommending that we build twelve homes per year over the next ten years for a total of a hundred and twenty new homes. So if you take the demo, plus replacing those, plus the new. So if you take the demo, plus replacing those, plus the new additional homes, that's a total of 222 new housing units over the next 10 years is what's recommended for our community.
Yes. I think, I hope you'll see that this is a very data-driven report. And it's not just a report, you know, sometimes you'll retain a consultant, they'll have some meetings, they'll publish a report, and it'll sit there gathering dust, and you really won't act on it. Well, I'm proud to say, and I'm pleased to say, that the city has been very much involved in the preparation of this report, and gathering this data, and analyzing this data, and discussing this data. Josh has been the driver, there's no question about that, and you can see that, but the city has been a deep participant. I'm the chair of the housing task force because you needed somebody from the city to be on the housing task force, as chair in order for the city to be involved as deeply as it has been. But really, the mayor's been involved quite a bit, as well as our city engineer, our code compliance officer, and other members of the council, and our ways and means chair, Doug Flornoy, all have had a part to play in some varying degrees of engagement of preparing this report. So I can, I can tell you that the city has been, is very connected to this report, has played an important part of the report in preparing the report, and you will see that the city, along with FIDA, Fairfield Economic Development Association of Grove Fairfield, are actually, right now, even as we were presenting the report to the public and to the council, we're actually taking action steps based on recommendations from this report. You'll see this evening, for those of you who will be around this evening, or you'll watch it or read it in the paper, we are taking steps now to implement both their suggestions of this report and to further our comprehensive goal, and which is also a visioning plan, which we've met about a couple of times in the last two years. So this is a part of the whole picture, and the whole picture is the city is taking action. And you'll, very good, very good action to help bring to reality the idea of more quality, affordable housing for our citizens. And for those, we want to invite, invite to move to Fairfield.
I'll make this next section brief, I see it's 7:51. I don't know how long I've been up here, so I apologize. One additional note, 220 new housing units recommended, which includes some demolition and one-for-one replacement. But I know Paul was particularly intrigued by this point. This is not even taking a look at the 2,801 people that commute into Fairfield every day, work here, but live outside Fairfield. So in addition to addressing our own housing needs and uphousing some folks that are here who want those opportunities, or right sizing some housing opportunities for people, we almost, we have almost 3,000 people that drive to Fairfield, work here, and take their paycheck and their housing opportunities outside our community. So if we were to even capture five or 10% of that number, that'd make an incredible dent on our economy, on our tax base, on usage of our amenities and all that good stuff. All right. I'll keep it quick. If you turn back to the yellow tab, there is a reason I kind of, I wanted to show you that the quantitative need, but then come back to the action plan. So pages seven through 19, sorry, seven through 17 are the action plan. On page seven, what you see is an actual picture of the wall from one of our work sessions with sticky notes up on the wall. You will see five areas of focus, focus on quality, educating the public what's going on with housing, work on financing and incentives, both for developers, but also home buyers. And then also, we combined these two columns, recruiting new developers and new housing. So of those five columns, we consolidated it down to four. Those are the, the areas of focus with objectives underneath. Obviously, we typed those up a little bit, but it was really fun to see that there was an actual picture for a work session. So the next pages are the working groups. They have quarterly goals, they have what success looks like in one year, they list partners. So there is task force members of the four working groups. For example, there's a quality group, that is heavily focused on addressing code, which you as the city are already doing, but this further supports that. And so if you look, what does success look like in one year? Update rental code and property and maintenance code, you're already underway, and also work with the code compliance officer to make sure he has all the tools and education that he needs to support the city's goals in code enforcement. And there's partners listed. So city streets department is going to be important in that waste management, the sustainability coordinator, code compliance officer, city planning and zoning are all going to be important. So there is appointed or selected task force members to serve on these subgroups, but it will expand to additional partnerships. So those are just, for example, but like I said, there's quarterly goals starting in May of 2023. This, this study was a little bit delayed, so we adjusted those goals to start this month. Those committees are going to start meeting soon. And it was communicated to us that some of these will take off a little faster than others, so just to set expectations, some move a little bit faster than others, you'll see some bigger moves on some of these than others. That's going to just be a natural progression, that some will get more traction. I'll let you finish the rest, but like I said, up to page 17 is those are the timelines and work plans and goals and objectives for those subcommittees. I'm a little dehydrated, so getting a little tired.
The city is not, you want to know that the city is a facilitator here. We're not, the risk takers are going to be entrepreneurs, the developers, the builders. They're going to, but the city is going to make it so that it's a sensible, it's a sensible step for them to take, to build. But the city wants to do what it can to encourage those people who to build to come to Fairfield. And we're trying to lay out, gather the data, and, and in terms of infrastructure, and in terms of financial structure, make it so that this is an attractive place to, for builders to build. We think we've done that, we're going to continue to do that. You'll see those steps, you'll see some of them even yet tonight. And so this study is just one more piece of a puzzle of helping Fairfield achieve its goal, one of its comprehensive goals, which is so important, which is housing.
We hope to be back soon, giving updates from committees, and I'll be talking about partnerships. Thank you.
So I think I would have, you know, if you have any questions, that come to mind later, you know, getting in contact with Josh, or Paul, or myself, and I'd just like to say that I'm going to throw out a big vision, and that's in 10 years, we're, we have the best housing stock of any 10,000 population city in Iowa.
I love it.
So that's my vision. It's my goal.
Does your, do you meet again anytime soon?
So that's a really good question, to be determined. We've kind of wrapped up what I would say our last large group session that was planned by Iowa State University. We should probably get together again, but the subgroups will definitely be meeting on a regular basis. Would you suggest we get together as a whole task force, or?
I would just make sure that the public knows when the various groups are getting together, so those interested will know to attend.
I agree with you, Connie. If we could be the example, we've received a lot of national recognition for the spec building and the childcare initiative, just as public-private partnerships and set some trends. So if we could do the same for housing.
And I think this is a great opportunity for our community to come together on some smaller grants, like painting houses, Keep Iowa Beautiful. There are painting grants through there. I know we have volunteer groups that are different larger employers that, you know, will take a day, and so I'm, I'm really hoping that can be more active, and some of our low-cost, no-cost loans to help people. And again, that's part of educating the public of what's, what's out there and how, how those can help them, and start to upgrade our community, and really take a sense of pride in our properties. Great.
Nick, or Don, didn't have, ask you to speak in advance, do you have anything?
Thank you.
Just a thought, we might look into using lost money for community betterment to set up revolving loans for home improvements like painting or whatever. I think that might be, well, we can check and see if that's legitimate or not, use of the money.
Well, there are some that Josh knows about that we could use for that.
We administer one, but it could be complemented or enhanced. And I plan to come to council in the next week or two and let you know about one of the existing revolving loan funds, especially targeted or more interested. Let me rephrase that, better suited for low to moderate income folks, we have a revolving loan fund that's 0% to 2% interest.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to resolution action items and ordinance. The first action item, consideration of authorizing signature and agreement with BNSF Railroad. So this is related to the overpassed art project by Chad, who's now here. And again, the insurance has been worked out, and so this is the agreement that we have to have with BNSF. Do you want to add anything to that, Rebecca?
I was just going to say that this is good, starting, the insurance begins November 1 and carries on for a year, so more than likely, we would plan on getting that insurance policy at that point in time.
Okay. John, do you have anything to say about this agreement?
I looked at the proposal from Burlington Northern. It's about 35 pages of stuff that protects Burlington Northern, literally. There's a lot of indemnification language in there, that's why it's important that we're well insured. It also has waivers for anybody that participates, acknowledging that they're at their own risk. And then there's an awful lot of regulation that only a railroad could generate as far as where you can be and where you can stand, and what you can step on and what you can't, et cetera. And, I mean, we have to basically take their rules when we're working around their property. So I don't think we got a lot of choice, but I think we should get into it so that we're permitted to be there. And then I guess the things are, if your group, as you develop the work plan, have some issues, come and see us, we can communicate with the railroad too. We just, at this point, basically, the railroad's got the upper hand as far as getting into this. If you want to do something nice as far as aesthetics for the community, the railroad's still going to treat it like just another project with a bunch of people around that could get hurt. So we don't want anybody to get hurt, we'll be insured, you'll be permitted, okay?
He has already read all those pages.
Okay.
Because she's the one who's doing the work. I have read it. And I think Rebecca and I are going to go over it and fill out everything and read it one more time, right?
Okay, so Shana's, in case the public didn't hear that, Shana's and Chad have read through it, and then they're go, they're going to go through it with Rebecca again, and just make sure everybody's on the same page. So.
Right. Motion to approve authorizing signature and agreement with BNSF.
Second.
Okay, moved by Anderson, second by Flornoy. Any further discussion? Sing non, please call a roll. Anderson?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Okay, next action item is consideration to accept the rural housing study and action plan that you just heard from Josh.
Will we accept the plan?
Second.
Moved by Flornoy, second by Toohill. Any further discussion? Sing non, please call a roll. Toohill, or excuse me, Flornoy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Next action item, consideration of engineering services agreement with French Reniker Associates with the Ninth Street Water Main Project. And we have Stephen here from French Reniker.
So I don't know if you can pull up the map, oh, perfect. So this is where we're talking here, this is about 1,100 feet of water main replacement on Ninth Street and also on Jefferson Street. And it's my understanding that there, this is old cast iron water main, they've had some leak issues, and the kind of a secondary benefit of this project is we're going to be creating a new loop, so it should increase water, improve water quality, improve fire flows in the area as well. You can see currently, there's, the blue lines is the existing water mains, and so that east-west stretch is going to be new water main on new alignment, so. This agreement is for design all the way through construction.
Motion to approve engineering services agreement with French Reniker for Ninth Street Water Main Project.
Second.
Moved by Anderson, second by Rasmussen. Any further discussion? Not, please call a roll. Anderson?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Quick question, Stephen. Are we talking to road closure, because I assume you're boring under the road there?
Yeah, so in my initial discussions with Melanie and Steve, the plan is to bore Jefferson. The rest of it, at this point, we're planning it for it to be an open cut project. It's pretty clean and there's not many utilities, but that road crossing would be boring.
Do you know approximate timing?
Melanie said as soon as we can get it done, so.
I assume the city loves on the road closure.
The intent, the intent is to have a bid opening later this year so that they could start work this fall possibly, or, and wrap it up next spring.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Next resolution, consideration of employment contract for city administrator. I'm asking Rebecca to go through the high points here.
All right. So Saturday, there was a special meeting, and council made an offer to Mr. Doug Reinert from Fort Smith, Arkansas. He accepted Sunday morning, and so we received that letter back. So the contract agreement goes over basically what was discussed in that council meeting. It's $130,000 annually. There's benefits that will be given to him, such as, you know, vacation leave and sick leave right off the bat, and some, up to $5,000 of moving expenses, travel expense, or, sorry, daily travel expenses with the IRS rates, and what else am I missing?
Start date.
Start date, so it's 30 days within days of final approval. I think today's the final approval, so hopefully 30 days from today.
And as a note on the moving expenses, he said he would move himself to save money versus getting a mover, so. Yeah. He's saving a little bit of money.
Motion to approve employment contract for City Admin.
Second.
Moved by Anderson, second by Flornoy. Any other discussion?
Yes, ma'am, I like, I don't know who was involved, I know Rebecca was heavily involved in logistics, setting up the meeting. The meeting, by the way, for the public, the meeting, this not only involved the council on Saturday, we were there at 8:30, we left at 3:30, so it was all day. The Carnegie Museum, which you should visit, but nonetheless, we had not only, not only city council, but many members of the community who volunteered their time to spend time with our, with our city administrator candidates. So I think it was very thorough, and we also thank the consulting firm who, who led this process, is a very thorough, comprehensive process. I think the city's, you can be proud of what the city did in terms of going through the steps initially to find what we thought was our best, our, our best candidate. We had our, we had a lively discussion, but we think the city's going to be, and the citizens are going to be pleased, and I want to thank Rebecca for the work she did to make sure this all came out very smoothly.
Thank you.
And that was just the final step in a long.
Well, let's forget Melanie.
I was going to say, that was just the final step in a long process.
That was just the last day, is all. That wasn't start to finish. Nope. True.
Yes, and it was Melanie. I heard Doug say that too. I want, I want to commend all of them for the extra work that they did, way beyond their usual, so.
Okay, go ahead and call a roll, please. Anderson?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Asked unanimously. Our next action item, consideration of grant application to the Greater Jefferson County Foundation on behalf of the City of Fairfield Volunteer Center for the Community Garden at Obie Nelson Park. I'm going to ask Barbara Rainbow to come up and talk about this project very quickly. And again, she's getting ready to submit an application on behalf of the city for the community garden.
Thank you for having me. So I'm a member of the board of the Fairfield Volunteer Center, and I'm a project leader for the community garden. I was a project leader for a similar community garden in Mount Pleasant, and that was very successful, and I started thinking, why am I driving to Mount Pleasant when I could be helping my own community have community gardens? So I spent about a year researching what has happened here before, was it successful? If there were problems, what were they? And so I've been working behind the scenes, working with our mayor and also the director of Park and Rec. And Park and Rec just recently approved that we could use Obie Nelson for a community garden, and we flagged the area, they came out and inspected it, and they've agreed to provide water to the garden area. And my project goal is to, this year, establish raised beds, fencing, bring in manure and compost, city mulch, and products like that, and by next spring, be able to start having, opening it up to the And by next spring, be able to start having, opening it up to the public. So it would be, this would be a community garden where anyone can come and use a raised bed. They're going to be about four foot by twelve feet, something like that, and they can grow food for themselves, or they could grow for a charity if they wanted to donate it, or students could come and have a plot and grow, just as a learning experience. So I have visited, I, I worked with the Mount Pleasant Community Garden there, and it was very successful. We not only taught people how to grow their own food, but we also provided excess produce to the food pantry there. And then when COVID came, we created kits of seeds and seedlings where people could take kits home and, and grow vegetables in their own garden. So I really would like to thank Connie for helping me weed through all the different channels to find out what would work here. I have a vision that utilizing our city parks or vacant lots in our city is a great foundation for creating community gardens. I did go and visit Iowa City, where they're using their Park and Rec Department, and they've allocated a certain amount of space to community gardens there, and they've been very successful. They told me they have like over three hundred people lining up the night before. You could sign up for a plot so they could get in. So they have a high demand for that. I realize they're a much bigger city than us, but I feel we're very progressive here. And we know that there are a lot of people that live in apartments or rental properties, and they, they would like to grow their own food, but they really don't have the space. So I feel it's a great way to bring our community together and to increase the richness of our, our community and our neighborhoods. We all know that it improves the quality of life for the people in the community, as well as property values and things like that. So I'm here to ask the city to officially approve this project. Fairfield Volunteer Center is under the umbrella of our city, and I am preparing to start applying for grants, and the Jefferson County grant is the first one I'm going to apply for.
Are you, are you going to apply for that for the fencing?
Yes.
And materials to get?
Yes.
To get everything laid out?
Yes. I've been working with Faith Reeves, who has the Fairfield Garden Initiative here. I don't know if you're familiar with her. And we've been talking about a survey that we're going to do, and she has helped me work up a budget of our costs, our basic costs. And it's around five thousand dollars for the first year. We're trying to be very practical. We want it to be successful. We don't want to be so grand and great that we never accomplish it. So we're taking steps one at a time and get this garden going, and then hopefully we'll have more.
So you had mentioned that they agreed to run water to it. Is they, Park and Rec?
Park and Rec, I didn't quite say that.
I thought it was they.
I come in.
Okay.
Park and Rec, we, she arranged for us. I'm the, you know, I'm, I'm the director of volunteer center, and she is becoming in charge of the gardens. But we did go to their committee, and they agreed to give us water, but they're going to put the water in.
What they want to do?
They're not running, they're not giving us running water. Water will be in, what, containers? Well, here's the thing. The reason we wanted to go to city-owned property, because we knew there probably would be water lines already there, and there is water on the property, the place where we want to have the community gardens over the old pool. So we know there's water there. And, but I think the Park and Rec wants to be sure that this is not just a dream, it's not going to fold because there's a grant that runs out or volunteers move away. So we want to make it a very solid foundation and, but we do know that water is critical for a garden. And if the city won't do it, we offered to actually raise funds and have a line put in, and Park and Rec said, that's not the problem. We will get a water line there. We just want to make sure that this is a solid project. And so what I asked of them is what they would like to see from us, to show that this is a guaranteed, a community garden, it's not going to fold in six months. And so I want to work with them and show them that, and that's why this year, I want to establish the hardware, the fence, get everything in there so they can see that. Now, what they've agreed to do is to loan a big, huge farm tank filled with water. They said they'll fill the water for us, and we can run a hose from it. We know that that won't work in the long run, and so I'm wanting to do everything I can to convince them that this is a done deal. And I was very pleased with another member on the board of Park and Rec. He also saw no reason why the city should not find a way to put a line in, once they see that this is all installed and ready to go.
So no matter what you do, a line or a tank, is, are you, is there a way we can secure that so the water that's there is for this project?
It would be very difficult, and it's not actually safe. But, and, and as she said, the amount of water that comes out of the hose of that container is not sufficient. But the, the point is that we're not, I mean, the way it was expressed, they're not going to give a line until we prove that we're going to be successful. But how can we be successful if we can't shed the, the water to it? So it's, so.
But there will be ways that we will secure the water, so it's not wasted.
I just want to make sure people don't think that water in a great big tank that isn't locked is drinkable.
No, and I, I think they would not have a hose to it all the time, and that's why, again, it would be problematic, because we would have to connect a hose, run it over to the garden, which is two or three hundred feet from where they would have the water. So, you know, the logistics of it is going to be problem, a problem. But I would like to show the city that we are raising the funds for good fencing, and it's not going to look tacky, it's going to be nice and attractive, and people will want to come. And we do have professionals in gardening working on this. So we do want it to be successful. And what I'm asking you, to look at the people who are involved in this project, to look at their background and look at all the successes that they've had, we will not take up a project that will not work.
So the grant where you're asking us to approve will be for fencing?
Yes, and it will, will include also the wood for the raised beds. And I think the city will provide the mulch that we need. We'll also have landscape fabric in the pathways, so that, we want it to be low maintenance, so Park and Rec is not taking on more.
Perfect. Okay.
Great. Thank you. And then we'll basically be providing them a letter for the foundation that says we're a nonprofit, and, so that's what they need to apply for the grant.
The Fairfield Farmers Market is also a sponsor for us, and we're working with them. They will also help us with any grants that we want to apply for. And also the Fairfield Garden Initiative.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks.
So is there a motion to approve this?
Just curious, how much is the grant roughly, the range?
The grant?
How much will you be seeking, yeah?
Probably about five thousand dollars this year.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Toohill, second by Flornoy. Any other discussion? I'll please call a roll. Toohill?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Ooh, sorry. Pencil broke. Rasmussen?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Barbara, for all your work on it, too. And Shanaaz, thank you very much. Look forward to food coming out of the ground soon. All righty. Next resolution, consideration of authorization, authorization of USDA grant application. And I'm going to ask Rachel Hillier to come up and go through this quickly.
Hi. Thank you, Mayor Boyer and council. This is Galen Satterley. Do you know him from the collective, right, in Brettopia? One of the things is that we found, I found this grant from the Office of Urban Agriculture and Innovation Production called a Composting and Food Waste Reduction Pilot Project Grant. And one of the things that basically it's really aiming to do is to, of course, divert food waste from landfill and create, generate compost, improve soil quality, and promote cooperative agreements between municipalities, business, school districts, and nonprofits. With the idea of creating an economic benefit to increase economic efficiency and self-sufficiency, and the project can continue past the grant period, which is desirable by the grant, that it's a sustainable grant, and then it doesn't just rely on the, on the addition startup funds. The grant will actually cover construction, which would be to basically retrofit the facility. It'll, it'll cover the food waste equipment itself, personnel, personnel necessary for the activity, and any lease rent option for the twenty five, it's a twenty-four month pilot project. And the grant funds are between fifty thousand and four hundred thousand. It does have a twenty-five percent match that we're pretty sure, well, we won't be able to apply for it, we can't, get most of this from partners. I've given you a little bit of a handout for some of that information earlier, so you can go through it at, at your leisure. But basically, one of our partners is Brettopia, because they actually, I don't know if you knew this, they mill their own flour here, and they have a lot of wheat bran waste. And one of the ways this pilot project is going to do is going to use anaerobic fermentation. And that just means that it doesn't, it's not like a traditional compost pile, it's not like stinky food waste rotting. So you basically put the food waste in with some kind of inoculate. And the inoculate is a, is a bacterial yeast fungal blend that you make with wheat bran. So the cool thing about, with Brettopia is that they could use their waste to create a product that actually we could add to the, to these, to the food waste. And then the food waste, any kind of food waste can go in there, leftovers, vegetables, bones, meat. It's not very picky. You can throw paper plates in there, and it breaks down in this fermenting process that is basically contained in closed containers. And then the liquid is, is basically taken out of those containers and used separately, which can be applied to soils directly. And then the, what we call the cake itself, with, as a final product, can actually just be buried in soil and is able to plant in it in two weeks. You don't have any problem with vermin or smell or anything like that. And so it's kind of a, we found there's a, a company called Bukashi Cycle, who makes all the equipment and is, and can sell us a, a whole pilot project with all the materials we need, so we don't have to invent anything. He's going to give us the inoculate concentrate to get Galen started. And also MIU is, is basically, is going to support the project as well, and they're going to supply their food waste, and also the regen ag is going to utilize that in their compost system. And Galen brought a, did you already send that around?
No.
Galen brought a letter of intent to support the project, so there's more information about the role of, of private business in this. And it seems to me that there will be a lot of ways for us to integrate different partners. I've listed a couple of them here. The Collective Lunch Box and the Broth Lab is interested in providing their food waste, which they have done in other communities. MIU on Aperna. I've talked to Connolly's about providing transport of the food waste from the, the sites to our processing area, which they are interested in, but I, I don't really want to hundred percent waste too much of their time until we're decide, the city decides as the only qualifying entity to apply for the grant. And then in the output, Wildspur's Farm, which is Tiffany Raines, is interested in doing a vermiculture experiment. And soil consultant Faith Reeves has been working closely with us to make sure that we're going to be able to utilize the final product. And we've looked at some numbers that the final product could be worth anything like around a thousand dollars a ton. So it is a moneymaker. It can take, you know, the, the yard clippings and, and tree branches, maybe be able to add it to that, basically break that down, the material a lot faster than twelve months. And so really, it just needs to be buried. It is like soil food. Is, it basically gets dissolved into the soil immediately, and it feels, it feeds up soil micro, microorganisms. So it's not like a fertilizer, like we think of chemicals you put on to feed plants, it's a, it's soil food. And so I think it's really exciting, and that Galen is excited, and Liza are excited to do this project. If you have any questions. Oh, there's a twenty-five percent match, but most of that, we're trying to get that match from in-kind. Pathfinders has talked about being able to donate a portion of my salary to, to serve as a match, and then part of the facilities that, and part of the grant, the city would basically pay a lease for the twenty-four month period. That can be waived as an in-kind donation. So we have a lot of opportunities for the in-kind I think we could cover.
So the plan is for no cash from the city?
No cash from the city.
But, but get that in-kind match from these other areas, so just so the council knows.
The partners, or if, if we basically end up starting, you know, decide to do something at the, at the brush and, and yard waste facility, it probably just be the in-kind donation would be just the use of, of like large equipment to like bury it. So, something like that, but we can, and the time necessary.
Yeah.
So it pays for the personnel, and we can ask, ask for that as part of the grant, too. We don't have to, that does not have to be in-kind. That would be covered as well.
And will you be writing the, the USDA grant?
Yes, I'm going to be writing it. And Ashley, uh, from Pathfinders is going to do a final review of it, and she's going to do that.
And they will administer the grant? Correct. They will administer the grant? Pathfinders?
Yes, and then we'll, yeah. Pathfinders will administer the grant.
Yeah. So, you know, this is, from my perspective, pretty exciting, because this has the potential for some pretty big things, possibly even a new business if it's successful. And if it is successful, certainly we can teach other communities how to do it. We do have, particularly with MIU, we have a lot of food waste per day out there that we're trying to avoid going to the landfill, because the landfill is what creates, the food waste in landfills, one of the biggest things that creates methane. And, you know, I guess probably not telling you anything you don't already know, but anyway, it has, it has some pretty significant ramifications if this is successful. So it's pretty exciting.
I think the other thing that's really cool about this pilot project is since it is going to do about ten tons a month, we could look and see if, if these small-scale systems work really well to keep the end product closer to where we might need it. So it could go into rural areas, it could go into Mari Shibe City, they could have their own processing. And, and, and Galen, as a business, is really looking at it for like, how, how is it going to make money? How are we going to sell the cake? And the, and the, and then we can actually work with NRCS and see if we can have them tested as well. So I think there's a lot of opportunity to come up with a solution to reduce petrochemical, need for petrochemical fertilizer, basically being able to restore a lot of soil here. One of the things about this, the tea, is it's, it's positively charged and clay is negatively charged, so it binds to the soil, and it basically makes a lot of the minerals which is in clay more bioavailable to plants and soil microorganisms.
So questions?
So can some of this come to the community garden then?
Yes. Yes.
Very possibly. Yeah.
I was thinking that when you were talking, like, all right, we got another one.
So is there?
I'll make the motion to approve authorization of the USDA grant.
Thank you. Moved by Flornoy, second by Anderson. Any other questions, discussion?
I actually just had one follow-up question. So the funding is between fifty-five thousand and four hundred thousand. You don't know where you're going to, even if you're awarded the grant, you don't know where you're going to fall in there?
Yeah. I think we have, like, Galen has two different buildings that we could look at, and it, when look at, and when we were first thinking it was just going to be like his food waste and Brettopia's food waste, but now that MIU is going to be putting the food waste, we may be going for the larger facility. So I'm thinking maybe $200,000 to $300,000.
Is what you'll request, or what they will award you?
That would be the budget of the grant.
Yeah, that would be the budget of the grant plus the match, which is 25% of that, so the whole cost, the whole cost of the system. I mean, of course, we'll also have to like, look at what we're actually going to be able to come up with matches.
Right.
So, I mean, it's just going to be kind of a number, we're going to have to work with the numbers, but I think that between $50,000 and $400,000, it'll be plenty to get us started in a usable facility that will be able to have, show a lot of good outcome and be a real, make a really positive impact in the community.
I know when we first started talking, Rachel was talking about $150,000, but when MIU came on, it may require more.
Well, they may have quite a bit of farmland coming available as well, so.
What, what now?
Sorry?
They may have some farmland coming available, MIU, down the road. It would take up quite a bit of this material.
Oh, yeah, yeah. The Regent Ag Department will probably be looking at how to better use this, their current compost system, they just have too much food and not enough carbon, so they're then also looking for a solution as well. So I think this is, this is probably, I've done bocash myself in my own garden, it's amazing, because in New Mexico, you can't really do compost, because it dries out in like two days. So, and, so anyway. Any other questions?
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, so nothing else, please call the roll.
Florin.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Esti.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Next item is a resolution to consider to accept transfer of Kevin Franklin of real estate and dwelling at 504 South Sixth. John, you going to talk about this, or Weston?
I think Weston is going to describe what's going on, and then I'll say something.
Great, thank you.
Well, I couldn't have picked a better night to bring this to you after Josh's presentation to you. I'll try and be short, though. A few months ago, Kevin came to us and wanted to donate his house to the city. He's unable to physically and financially take care of it. That kind of set off some red flags, why would somebody want to donate a house to the city? So I got with John and Kevin, and we assessed what was really going on, and the value of the house, and Kevin's ability to donate it financially and stuff. After that, we evaluated the house, the house is condemned, and it's not livable at this point.
Is it one of the 33 that's in very poor?
I don't know if it would have been or not. It, I call it a 20-20 house. At 20 feet and 20 mile an hour, it looks good. When you get up close to it, there's lots of things going wrong with the house when you get inside of it and stuff. We've worked with Kevin and helped him get into some low-income housing, and vetted his situation considerably. I recommend that we take the property, or accept the property at 504 South Sixth Street, free and clear of title, in exchange for abating the condemned house. The city will have several options to how they want to handle the property once we have control of it, whether that is a sealed bid auction to get it to somebody in the community that wants to invest in it or tear it down, or whether we want to tear it down and use it for a project that we have. It is a nice corner lot, Kevin is planting some really nice fruit trees on it, so I think it's a valuable thing for the city to do. And I think that everybody's in a win-win situation with it. We get rid of the house that needs to be condemned, or is condemned now, and Kevin got into a better situation.
This might be a great model for us going down the road and improving some of the housing.
The nice part about it is that we can keep our thumb on it. Also, if an investor wants to come in and rehab the house, if they have that kind of goal, we can set all of our standards to what we want to see that house come to, and if they don't meet those standards, and within a certain timeline, we can have it in our contract that we get the house back for like a dollar.
Right.
So it's, it's kind of nice, because then we don't have somebody coming in just doing the minimum repairs to get a low-income house out there.
So I'd make the motion to accept the transfer of property from Kevin Franklin at 504 South Sixth Street.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Discussion, John, were you going to say something?
Just a little bit, this is the diplomatic approach to taking a property where the owner is saying he can't really keep it up anymore. And that happens around town, and the scenario that Weston and I talked through was, it's a situation where if you do what is requested, we need to be part of the relocation, and Kevin worked with him and Optome to find a subsidized housing. The other thing we had to deal with, and it's a good education as far as the idea that a lot of these properties are going to come with liens attached in one form or another. This property, there's a release of a lien from DHS that is part of the understandings in the resolution, that we're accepting it free of liens, but we have a letter that basically Weston secured, that involves release of that, so Kevin's not afflicted with the lien, and the city's not afflicted with the lien, and he can live comfortably in a new housing without having to worry about a State Department messing with him. So those things, we look at the practical side of what happens sometimes, when somebody does say to us, I'll cooperate with you, but we're just not going to be able to do this, and we need the city's patience. The other side of this, and we'll have another talk about this probably when our new administrators with us, and we've had a talk in a work session about seven ways we can deal with problem housing, and dilapidated housing, unsafe housing, and so forth, is people, Weston's working with a family right now that is living in a house that is much more substantial than anything that Kevin thought was a problem with his place. And these folks will not cooperate, is the only way to put it. They do not want to be moved, they both have disabilities, we're probably going to have to involve county attorney's office as far as a possible state guardianship, we're probably going to have to deal with liens again, we're going to have to deal with things that require court orders and probably mandatory movement eventually, but we're also going to have the relocation problem, we're also going to have something that's beyond diplomacy in this situation, because once they say, I'm not going to do it no matter what, if it's something that must be done, or it's a health hazard, the Board of Health and the other people in the community that are watching that side of it, say, if you're not going to do it, who is? Basically, we're taking that on as we start this process of 10 a year, whatever it's going to amount to, and there may be one that's patience and diplomacy, and works out well as far as relocation and so forth. I think we're going to be bringing you back some others where it's a joint effort between county, the DHS caseworker, probably Optome, probably two or three other agencies to get a relocation to happen, and at the same time, do what we have to do so that a place that isn't just an eyesore, but is a health hazard, goes down. So, enough said, but that's probably the other end of the spectrum, and that may be the next discussion we have.
Okay, great, thank you.
Kevin has given me permission to make a statement.
Yeah, go ahead. Thank you. Can you state your name, please?
Yeah, I'm Tricia Stiggers-Riaz. I work for Optome Life Services. I do, I mean, it really was timely with your housing study. Kevin's situation is a cautionary tale. I've worked with other people like Kevin. Fixed income, housing is a real problem in Fairfield. I work for the, I run the Resource and Recovery Centers. Lots of people come to us for housing resources. I don't have any. I have nothing to offer them. You know, we can apply for some of the low-income places, there's only a few places in town that are already subsidized. Otherwise, they have to go on the waiting list for Section 8 in Area 15, and that can take a year or more. So, you know, Kevin's situation, he finds himself at a house that is condemned and nowhere to go. So this was a long process to try to get something lined up, it doesn't happen overnight, and there are no resources that are really set up. We're really not equipped to do it. We're glad to help people, to connect them to resources, but the resources have to be there for which we can connect. So it's just something to keep in mind. This was a difficult process, and Kevin was really a good advocate for himself, and we had a great team. Weston was wonderful in helping us get this going, and very patient, but it is, like I said, a cautionary tale, because this will be the situation for many people living in these homes that should be condemned, that there is nowhere for them to go, and no funding to find with many of them on fixed incomes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Kevin, we wish you the best of luck in your new home, and thank you for working with the city on this process. Okay, so we do have a motion and a second. Any other discussion or questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Florin.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Esti.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Okay, next is the action item, to set a public hearing for May 15th at 7:00 PM. This is related to the loan development agreement with the Fairfield Economic Development Association.
You're, we're asking to set the public hearing.
Yes.
I'll make a motion, yes.
Second.
Moved by Toohill, second by Florin.
Seven o'clock, that night.
Seven o'clock, yes. Any other discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Toohill.
Yes.
Florin.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Esti.
Yes.
Next resolution, consideration of approval and authorizing acquisition of real estate interest, surface rights, surface disruption, crop damage with tenant of record, Sean Crumblts, parcel seven. And John, are you going to talk about this?
Yeah, I will.
Actually, we have two of these, so.
Yeah, these look somewhat like we had you do 100 times on the Libertyville Road acquisitions and the Step Three acquisitions. They have the standard Title VI language in about the fact that we've done all of the notices, all of the procedures required preliminary to making an offer and then resolving it with the owner or the owner of the property interest. This first one was Mr. Crumblts, he's the renting tenant of the farmland, we're going to damage his crop for a bit, so we put in a calculation that was done by Melanie, it's based on estimates of where the crop price range is going to be, and what the input range is, for what he's going to lose, and the amount of square foot of area that's going to be disrupted, and we're paying him basically for surface damage on a property interest that we already have an easement for. So he, as the tenant, will be compensated for what his interest is for short-term use of the surface of the land we have the easement on. And that's basically what this is, we're going to pay him $1,850, and that, I think that's the figure we plugged in, but anyway, it's a calculation that Melanie felt was fair. We have a resolution that allows our city administration to make determinations on fair compensation on less than $10,000 property interest issues, so we're going under that authority, but at this point, it is a reasoned calculation based on farm input prices and farm crop prices.
We've already approved the, paying the bill.
All right.
I made the motion that we approve this agreement.
Okay, moved by Florin, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Toohill, any further discussion? Now, please call the roll.
Florin.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Esti.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Okay, then the next one, same thing, this was with Brandon Taglar, parcels nine and
10.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Anderson, second by Florin. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Anderson.
Yes.
Florin.
Yes.
Esti.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Thank you. And then the next action item, consideration to set up public hearing for the proposed park buildings for Monday, and it should be May 22nd, 2023, at 7:00 PM.
So moved with correction.
Second.
Moved by Anderson, second by Florin. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Anderson.
Yes.
Florin.
Yes.
Esti.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Thank you. And then the next action item, consideration to set up public hearing for the fiscal year 2023 budget amendment. Again, this is Monday, May 22nd, not the 24th, 2023, at 7:00 PM.
Moved to approve.
Moved by Rasmussen.
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any discussion?
Yes. What is the proposed budget amendment? Can someone please give me a little brief description of what it is we're seeking to amend?
So anytime you go over, you spend more than what you budgeted, you have to do the budget amendment.
So we're spending more than what you budgeted?
Mm-hmm.
On what?
Oh, well, off the top of my head right now, the CDBG grants that was approved by council, that was not budgeted for, so we spent more than what was budgeted.
How much more?
The Jefferson County Kids and the Food Initiative, I think we're right around $400,000 between the two of them. I'd have to double-check those figures, that's what I've been working on.
But to see, the money that, for the grant, CB, that's not our money, it's pass-through money.
Right.
So we didn't budget for it, they got the grant, so now we're spending the money that is passing through the city.
Right.
Now we have to set the budget to match what we spent, cash we sent out.
So the money is flow-through?
Flow-through.
Okay, okay.
And daycare center is the same thing, right?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so we do have a motion and a second, so any other questions? Please call the roll.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Florin.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Esti.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Esti.
Yes.
Florin.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Okay, under the mayor's report, we have some board appointments. The first one is a CVB Convention and Visitors Bureau Board. The appointee is Gavin Steever, replacing Tammy Dunbar, and I don't think I had, they submitted a intent to, request to serve. However, their board has vetted Gavin, he does work for Edward Jones, and it's nice to have some younger people get started on our board, so I would request that you approve Gavin.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved by Toohill, second by Anderson. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, great, approved. And then for Carnegie, we have Russell Cooper and John Carlson, and they are replacing Kathy Tolanair and Stan Plum.
I know Russ, I think he'll be great, so.
Great.
Moved to approve both.
Okay. Moved by Toohill, second by Florin.
No.
Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Great, thank you, that's passed. I have a proclamation to read. This is from Terry Baker, National Travel and Tourism Week, 2023 proclamation. Whereas the travel industry fuels every industry and will continue to be an essential part of Iowa and Fairfield's economy, development, and workforce. Whereas travel is an economic powerhouse for every state and destination across the country, with an economic output of 2.6 trillion in 2022, supporting 14.5 million American jobs. Whereas travel spending supports vibrant and safe communities in Iowa and across the United States by generating 84 billion in state and local tax revenue in 2022 to support[1785.37] to support essential services such as education, emergency response, public safety, and more. Whereas travel enables success for all industries, including manufacturing, agriculture, defense, healthcare, and more by driving sales growth, innovation, education, and operations that move our economy, our nation, and Iowa forward. Whereas direct visitor spending in Fairfield and Jefferson County totals nineteen point eight million and generates four point two million in state and local taxes. Whereas increasing travel too, and within the United States, drives America forward to a more prosperous future. Whereas the travel industry's success will grow Fairfield's economy and workforce since prior to the pandemic, small businesses accounted for sixty percent of leisure and hospitality employment. Whereas travel is an essential industry, and we must continue to communicate that growing travel leads to economic growth, benefits businesses, and fosters mutual understanding. Therefore, I Connie Boyer, Mayor, do hereby proclaim, May seventh through the thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, as National Travel and Tourism Week in Fairfield and urge the citizens of Fairfield to join me in recognizing the critical role this industry plays in not only our community but throughout the state of Iowa. Thank you for that. And, uh, with that, I happen to come up my calendar, just so people know. Um, May is actually Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. So I thought I would just give you a quick background on that. This recognizes the contributions and influence of Asian, Asian American and Pacific Islander Americans to the history, culture, and achievements of the United States. Um, the first Asians documented in America arrived in fifteen eighty-seven when Filipinos landed in California. Uh, the first Chinese reached the United States in seventeen seventy-eight. They actually arrived in Hawaii. And then the next group, uh, were the Japanese, who arrived in eighteen eighty-six. And the Koreans arrived in eighteen eighty-four. So this all came about, um, back in the seventies, uh, when a congressional staffer suggested to a representative to, uh, consider that we should recognize, um, the Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders. And this all started because of, the Golden Spike was driven into the first continental, transcontinental railroad, which was completed using Chinese labor, and that started on May tenth, eighteen sixty-nine. So kind of an interesting, uh, thing. But I wanted to recognize that for this month. Um, my last thing is that, uh, I am planning a town hall at, at five thirty on, um, May twenty-second here at City Hall at five thirty. Um, my guest will be Brett Farrell. He's our new fire chief. He's also been our emergency management coordinator for several years. And some of the things that we're going to talk about, you know, that we are in the tornado, tornado season, and so we certainly, uh, you know, have already had one experience, and we've had some storms the last couple nights, so we're going to talk about several things related to that. Also, things that have been in the news the last couple of months have been railroad, uh, derailments. So he's, uh, going to talk about that and talk about process that, you know, what has happened in Fairfield? And, uh, get a public understanding of what that process is, how that's handled. And, um, I, I did have an email on that after the ones out in Ohio. So we felt that the public should be informed, because since our railroad goes right through almost our center of town, it's just a couple of blocks, blocks away from downtown. So again, um, we'll do it live, so you can see it live stream. You'll be able to watch it later. Jason will tape it. Um, but you can also come to City Hall. Again, so that's, uh, on our next meeting on the tw- twenty-second. Yes, at five thirty. So, um, that is all I have. City attorney report.
Just briefly, um, the ambulance service agency, I don't know, Tom, did you get a notice that they canceled the board meeting again?
No, I didn't see that yet. So that's not.
I was thinking there was going to be a special board meeting tomorrow morning, and somebody left me an email.
Yeah, no, oh, I think, I think we canceled, maybe that was before you were at the last meeting. I think they agreed that.
That was done a little bit ago.
Yeah.
We were supposed to have a hearing in district court this morning on the, uh, motion to, uh, essentially resist them amending their prior pleadings done back in February. I think I told you about that a meeting or two ago. Uh, since then, the, uh, Care, uh, Emuants, uh, Corporation decided to withdraw their amended answer and counterclaim that they had, uh, sought to file. Uh, now, after they dismissed that and told the court that we didn't need to have the hearing, uh, but they, they also told the court that they're probably going to be filing a different relief request that has to do with what we agreed to at mediation. And essentially where we're going to be is just trying to sort out, get an agreement with them, and then I think we might have a settlement. Essentially, we're going to pay the money that was agreed back at mediation, subject to an adjustment for the services they didn't provide. I think that's the consensus between the three governmental entities in the twenty-eight E. It isn't quite clear what that's going to amount to, but each of the three agencies has agreed they will have the money available, if necessary, to put into escrow with the clerk of court. Uh, and held either by the clerk of court, or if the court approves it, by the, uh, CFO for the, uh, twenty-eight E agency pending, uh, the court agreeing with the workout on the fund adjustments for the extra ten thousand dollars a month that we agreed to in mediation. What we determined, uh, and we just, we got some information, which I don't know if it was shared with you or not, Tom. Um, because I'm not sure it, it came from the health center, but I believe, um, it also came from the dispatch at the law center. Essentially showed that there are some, uh, uh, days, uh, during each of the months since, uh, we've started the hearings back in January, uh, where there have been services that did not get provided, manpower that was not available, and things that were not there that they said they should be paid for. So, uh, we've got that information. Again, it's going to be something where we sit and probably count beans with them as far as how it's going to work out as far as the final payment. But I think the sentiment of the three attorneys talking with their attorney is that you're going to come out somewhere, uh, between what you want and somewhere, uh, adjusted by what you didn't do. Uh, the latest contention is that they're fully staffed and that they are doing both the transport services and the emergency services, and that they are in compliance. So while that's been a play, uh, explained to the judge by telephone, we still haven't had the hearing, uh, as far as whether there's something that is contentious. Uh, it's been continued for another couple of weeks, uh, and in the meantime, uh, we'll be going back with our respective boards and talking about what we think a fair payment is for each of the ten thousand dollars a month, uh, improved payment that we agreed we'd do in mediation. Right now, they haven't been paid anything since we mediated, uh, and it may be a few more weeks before we have that resolved. So that's where we are.
Great, thank you. Committee and board reports, Ways and Means. Do you have anything?
No.
Okay.
I was trying to think.
We voted a lot already.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
It was the loan, the loan.
Yeah, just want to make sure you didn't want to say anything else. Okay. Um, Economic Development Committee, we've kind of done that. Have anything else?
I was going to say we met from noon to one fifty-four today, but we didn't come up with any, anything conclusive to recommend to council yet, so we will go over that next Monday.
Yeah, great. Have a few more details to work out. Uh, Planning and Zoning Commission minutes.
So those are just attached for informational?
Yep, okay.
If anybody has any questions.
Okay. Okay. Uh, Administrative Department reports, uh, Code Compliance Report, Weston.
I'll keep it short. Um, the main thing tonight was the Four Seasons, uh, scrapyard, and they were supposed to become in compliance with building a fence uh, by the first of this month, um, and clean up their personal property that is across from it. Uh, so far, they have gotten the personal property cleaned up. They did apply for a fence permit for the scrapyard area. It did not have enough information on it, so it was rejected. Uh, they did wait until late in their timeframe to even apply for that. We've had them in court for the personal property area, um, or the residential area, I should say. Which they have, like I said, basically cleaned up. There's a few other things there that need to be straightened up, but, um, I guess I need to know what the council would like to do going forward, whether you would like to give them a time extension to try and get the fence permit in and, uh, move forward with that part of it? Or do we want to go ahead and cite them at this time and let them continue to work towards the fence?
If I recall, if they didn't get the fence permit and put the fence up, they were also going to be out of compliance with the state and thus could no longer.
They've, they've been out of compliance with the state for over a year.
For over a year, okay. And, and so they're not doing that, what was it, auto recycling or?
They've been operating as, in my opinion, they've been operating as an, as an auto recycling, uh, yard this whole time.
But out of compliance.
But out of compliance.
Okay.
But Weston, don't we also want them to, uh, comply with this fencing regulation that we're putting in that needs to be finalized one more reading?
It, it does, but, um, Melanie's can, approval can be contingent on this. Looking that it's already been approved twice or been through council twice and knowing that it's coming up for a third reading.
Do you know if the, the fencing application that they put in, was it even close to meeting?
It didn't have measurements and stuff that Melanie needed to even make the, the proper determination. And then, of course, it didn't have what it was made out of or anything like that.
Would you conclude they're not doing due diligence as we agreed?
What's that?
Would you conclude they're not doing due diligence as we agreed two months ago?
On that property, yes.
They, they haven't completed. They did start, I mean, it, they did start cleaning stuff up, but it looks like they stopped quite some time ago. It, it doesn't look like any progress has been made in a while.
There, there's an area that's kind of a revolving area, um, that stuff comes in and out of, it's right on the frontage. Um, we've asked them several times not to put cars out there in the right-of-way for sale, not to park cars out there. They continuously do that. There's an area to the south.
Since they're visited here, they've been doing that?
Yes.
Yeah. And the semi is still, the trailer is still sitting there on the corner?
It's inside their area, so it's not in the right-of-way.
Okay.
Um.
Boy, it looks awfully close.
Like, two Fridays ago or, or so, um, they were dropping a, uh, concession stand trailer in the right-of-way, and I stopped and I told them not to do it. Um, the people told me that Eimer had told them to drop it there, or somebody at Four Seasons had told them to drop it there. I said that I would be back to ticket them if they didn't, and they went ahead and dropped it there. Monday, I had to go tell them to move it before they would move it. There is trash on the backside of there. There's like a mattress and stuff. I've asked them several times to start getting that picked up, because that would be outside their fenced-in area. So at least start working on the things that are outside the fenced-in area, and there's been no progress on that.
No.
But they did do fairly well on the other property. But they waited until, their excuse was to wait until it was warmer to do it.
It was my understanding that we wanted this done by the first of the month.
When we had the agreement back in, when did we meet with, about this, in March?
Yeah.
March.
Yeah, they knew what the weather was going to be when they agreed to that back in March, so to argue now that it's not warm enough, I think we've had a pretty mild late winter. One of the problems with these situations is they keep asking for extensions, and it gets extended, it gets extended. We don't have the backbone to make them do it.
Sorry, that doesn't sound fine.
Uh, John can probably talk a little more knowledgeably about this, but there's two different routes. We can go civil and infraction, and I'm not sure the other one.
Well, um, personally, I don't want to file on them until after we've published our new fence ordinance, because we're going to be splitting hairs with them on some stuff on the fencing, I think. Uh, but that's only a, another council session away. Um, at this point, uh, if we drop in on them, uh, and remind them that they were supposed to have this done last week.
I, I did last week.
You did drop in?
Yes.
Okay.
And we still don't have a compliant application in hand yet for the fence, and it's not being cleaned up.
Right.
So when you said our, our, our next step was a, a fee, is that a civil infraction?
Well, he, he can file, just like a traffic ticket, he can file a, a simple misdemeanor violation for every day they're not in compliance. The civil infraction stuff gives us the authority to go with a crew if we need to and move stuff or throw stuff away or make them do things. Uh, there's actually about seven different alternatives under the civil side. Uh, and the court has to see that we've already tried working with them. We've noticed them before and that kind of stuff. So we're okay to file that, but I'd like us to have our ordinance and probably have a discussion with them about the fence that they aren't doing right now, uh, and what is expected, and that they could have come over the last, uh, six weeks and learned what they need to do about the fence, because we've had it out here for discussion each week for each meeting. Uh, and I, you know, at this point, they're just going to do it when they feel like it. It's the experience I've had with them for ten, fifteen years.
What's daily fee?
Depends on how we, how we cite them. Um, fifty to seven hundred dollars, I believe, is the, the civil side.
Yeah.
And then if we go with a, uh, the other infraction of seven hundred and fifty to a thousand dollars.
A day.
Can be up to a day.
Who makes that decision?
The magistrate.
So.
We can ask for it.
You're seeking council's input on whether to proceed with, with a fee or whether to?
Whether you want to give them a time extension.
Give them a time extension, okay.
And are you recommending, though, wait until next meeting when the fence regulation is?
That's what I'd prefer, because I'll probably talk from the fence ordinance on part of the things they argue with us about.
So.
So once that's passed, can, will the infractions, can, can the infraction start the, the next day?
Yeah, we, we can file a, uh, civil petition that says we've done these things with them, because we have been working with them. And they've been in front of council. They've, they've already had their opportunity to be heard, and some of the things you give them notice about on the, uh, civil side. Um, they were here more than once, frankly, and they're just, uh, at this point, their excuses aren't good excuses. And, I mean, I didn't realize Weston had dropped in on them last week, but.
I did, because I wanted to tell them that I would be presenting to you about the progress that was made.
They knew he was going to be checking then, though, and, uh, I mean, I give him credit for cleaning up over around the residence on the north side of the street. But for everything they did on the north side of the street, it was ignored on the south side of the street.
And part of that moved to the south side.
So are you recommending we wait until the third reading of that fencing ordinance?
To take any action?
So are you recommending we extend, give an extension until then? Two, two weeks?
Two weeks.
Yeah, or we don't do anything except keep looking at it and letting them know that we're.
So can we just table this until the next meeting?
Well, if you want to do that, you can, yeah.
Is that okay with you if we table it?
That's fine with me. I just, we had set a date out there, and I wanted to put it in front of you and get your opinion on how you wanted to proceed with it.
Yeah, I think it should be very clear. So if we wait until the ordinance passes, then there's no black and white or gray.
Yeah.
Can you make sure this is on our next agenda?
And right now, if they were to apply, Melanie has fourteen working days to approve a fence.
Application.
Application.
Okay. So that's perfect.
So we're.
Yeah.
We're going to get through that.
Yeah.
No matter what.
Okay.
So, next time you, if you want to give them a timeline, we need to have something that is at least two weeks long, so they can get that application in.
Well, they haven't requested an extension, right?
No.
No, so there's nothing for us to do.
They need to cover it.
Right, we can't make, we can't just suspect it, yeah.
I think if Weston tells them that the, the council has tabled it as far as deciding what action to take next, and they ought to take advantage of the fact that they could get their permit before the next council meeting, one of the two of them will probably come to their senses.
But the question is that we've waited this long just to get the permit. How long are you going to give them to actually put the fence up after that? If, if that's what it comes to.
But shouldn't they go ahead? I mean, if you don't put a deadline in terms of when they have to get, they already have passed the deadline for the permit.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct, so.
They're supposed to fix it up by, already today.
Right.
I mean, it'd be a first this month, so they have it all done, right?
Correct.
That's what we agreed to when they were here.
Mm-hmm.
That's what I was going to say. If, if we take the teeth out of it, we're not. I say, all we're doing is giving ourselves two more weeks to get an ordinance, an updated ordinance. ordinance passed.
We're teaching them how to treat it.
There's other things we can do that cause a lot of discomfort to them, too. If we refer to the county attorney's office as a 321 violation under the DOT statutes, or if we refer it to DOT as something that they're in non-compliance for the last year, those are both things that come with a different kind of penalty than what we have authority for.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of the DOT comes from when they resell a vehicle, so if they're jumping title or somehow working their way around that, they don't have as much, as many teeth as we do even.
Yeah.
They know they've been operating that way, was the feeling I got from them when I talked to them about it already. It was just the fact that they had to prove it, so...
So, do we need, do you want it officially tabled, or we just take no action until, and readdress this at the next meeting? What are you suggesting, John?
I'd just as soon tell them that it was tabled and that that's going to mean it will definitely be acted on at the next meeting.
Our goal is to get it cleaned up. I mean, our goal is not to make it a profit center. We don't want to make money off this. We want it cleaned up as soon as possible. So if we tell them that if they don't have a fence permit, application filled out and signed, and a contract in hand of a company to start the fence by, within two weeks, then the fines will start on the next day? We can tell them that, correct?
I don't know if we can tell them who they have to have the fence done by. I don't know that we've got the authority to be that specific with them.
We don't have to tell them who to have it done by, but if they have a contract...
How they're going to do it.
If they show us a contract in hand for the fence, I mean, that gives them two weeks to fill out the application and find somebody to build the fence. Not necessarily the construction started, but to have a contract in hand.
Unless they say they're going to do it themselves.
Well...
I think the question is, though, that we've already given an extension, and they're not asking for another extension now, even though they're on notice that we were going to be discussing it tonight. So, I mean, it just could be perpetual extensions.
Well, we're not giving an extension tonight. We're just delaying action until we have our ordinance in place.
I know.
So, it'll be a surprise.
Just encourage them to keep that paperwork going.
So we're going to table it for two?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to table this topic for May 22nd.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Flornoy. Any other discussion?
But I would tell them that action will probably start the day after our meeting in two weeks.
Right, keep the paperwork going.
So, I will go deliver this message to them.
Okay.
Hopefully, Eimer is around.
Do we need to do that type of communication via mail, US Postal certified?
I don't think you need to.
I think we need this in writing, that we will address this at the next council meeting.
I can draft a letter that states that and that the council is...
And then we can put it in the folder, and we'll have it as a point of reference. I would like this to be in writing.
Okay, great.
I think that's very wise.
So, we do have a motion on the floor to table this.
And a second.
And a second, yes, thank you. Any other discussion? No, please call the rule. Anderson?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
To Hill?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Great.
I have one other thing I want to make sure it's okay with John that we talk about. We have another case going on with the boarding house.
Yeah.
We had a deadline to get contracts in on that particular one and have some proof of the roof going on 57 North Court, the noodle house, as you all know. With that, we've been just peace-fed little things. I've requested that we get contracts from contractors, from electricians, and from the roofer and proof of what is going to be done to fix it. She has failed to do that or to send those things. I've been asking, I would ask that we move forward with that process, and I don't know exactly what it would be, John, with its 657A or how we want to handle that.
It won't be 657A because it's not an abandoned property.
Yeah, so...
But what it is, it's an unsafe structure, and that's chapter 17, and she's been making promises all spring. We evicted everybody last Christmas time, and essentially, we gave one extension to one person downstairs on the premise that some things were going to happen that wouldn't make his situation unsafe, and he just needed a few days to get moved out. That took a month, and at that point, what she was promising to do and so forth, we had to basically pull teeth to get the engineering report that she was doing to counter what we said was wrong, and the engineers agreed with us. So, we just got that report, what, two weeks ago?
Yeah, less than two weeks ago.
Yeah, so now, we know her engineer. She was going to go back and have the engineer rewrite the letter rather than pay him. We caught that threat from her during the course of discussing this over at the magistrate's court, and, I mean, there's tricks up her sleeve, I guess is the only way to put it, but she isn't doing, she isn't doing what we're asking her to do.
It amazes me that the bottom half of that property is still in shape.
Only the noodle house is.
Only the noodle house area.
The rest of the downstairs is, and just about as bad a shape as the rest of the building.
So what are our next steps?
Well, I think we go after it as an unsafe structure under chapter 17, and she, at this point, she's going to say we haven't given her a chance, but she's had lots of opportunities to get somebody up there. I mean, it hasn't been bad weather all spring, and essentially, she doesn't want to do more than the bare minimum, and the bare minimum isn't what her engineer experts have told her she's got to do to fix it.
She hasn't done the bare minimum, though. I mean, there's some spray foam cans that you buy at the grocery store, you know, to fill a couple holes in the top, and that's...
Yeah, well, there's big globs of molded stuff between the drop ceiling and the real ceiling. There's lots of wood that's got some rot on it. There's lots of wood we have pictures of with some mold on it.
So, John, do we, as a council, need to make a motion and vote for Weston to take the next steps?
Yeah, I, there are steps that go all the way to taking the property. We're not there yet, but there are steps where the court, under this infraction process, can make her do things that she said she was going to do, and she'll tell us that she already has it in place, but it isn't in place. The contracts that she says are going to happen, what did she tell us?
She didn't want me to...
Sometime in June, possibly, there'd be somebody on the roof.
Yeah, she didn't want me to contact the roofer personally. She doesn't want me to have any contact with them.
Well, she can take that position, but then we're going to subpoena the roofer. And I guess the thing is, we haven't had that kind of a posture from somebody, but this lady's pretty stubborn, and she hasn't lawyered up yet, though, either, and that's troubling to me. I'd rather be working with somebody on the other side that understands when we say no. I guess we'll just subpoena it.
Do we give her a deadline, John?
We've given her several.
Yeah, so...
She just keeps feeding us what she thinks is going to be enough to keep us at bay.
Yeah, so let's move forward on this next step.
I say, can we just make a motion to proceed with legal action? Is that enough? John?
Yeah, let me say a little more. We gave her a list of, like, 13 things that if she fixed, we'd allow her to have people reoccupy. None of those are complete. We've got...
No, and I feel like one of our, one of our stipulations was you had to have a structural engineer evaluated, which she did, and she thinks that's checking it off the list, not abiding by what the structural engineer is suggesting to her or telling her that it needs to be done. She's fighting us very hard on that. So, even when she does look at the list, it's not, it's, okay, yeah, I did this word-for-word I did, I had a structural engineer look at it. You didn't say that I had to comply with the list.
Gotcha.
That's where I was talking about, deadline, so...
So my concern is that we're getting into summertime, we're going to be coming into summertime, getting a roofer that is qualified to actually fix this if she's not going to do it as a city and/or as an investor that takes over it. And it's going to sit there for another year, and it's going to be very, according to the report from the engineers, it's very detrimental to let it go for any longer.
How is it affecting the building next to it?
The, I mean, anytime you get a wet sagging roof pulling on, the, the structure next to it is not going to help that structure, and the mold and the, and the bugs that are in it, I'm sure are affecting the rest of the buildings there on the square also. I don't know that it has, other than that, I don't know that it has a direct effect on the building next door without opening up the ceiling and seeing where the parapet or the walls are holding together. A lot of the mortar in the building needs a lot of attention by a professional, in my opinion. She's indicated to us that she does not want to use a professional and that she wants to have her own people do the masonry work on it. I think this is very detrimental to the building. I think somebody needs to oversee it that's at least a professional, if not do the work.
Yeah, she hasn't taken the suggestions of people that Weston knows that can do the work, and she doesn't have to take the names down to at least look into them, but she's not, I don't think she's going outside her people that have been part-time tenants or part-time laborers for her, and they aren't skilled people.
And not to pile on, how many rental properties does she own in town in addition to this?
I think seven or eight.
And how many are inhabitable out of those seven or eight?
There's one that is habitable so far. We haven't been back in for a rental inspection. It's in very poor shape. She has one that has three apartments in it. Two of them have been on fire and are shut down. The back apartment is, we need to do another inspection of it.
Okay.
Yeah, the fire building is likely to come back to you as what we call 657A because it has been abandoned for a long time, and it isn't getting fixed.
And a number of the other ones are just uninhabited, right? I mean, they can't be habitable.
Correct. There's 302 East Burlington that I would like the council to move forward on also. That would just be the start.
So, I mean, nothing's getting done anywhere, so...
The, she's done...
Action probably needs to be started.
She did some work on 650, or 306 East Burlington, the little white house just down from the brick, the red brick house.
On the same side?
On the same side.
Yes, okay.
She did attempt to have somebody come put a roof on it. I don't know why she hasn't finished what she was working on there. I know I went and I pointed out several things that were wrong with the roof that they had to come back and fix, so it's just sat there since then.
It seems to me, counsel, that we need to move forward on any legal action.
Yes.
We should make a motion for that. Please.
I would make a motion that the council give Weston permission to begin legal action.
Second.
Yes.
All right.
Okay. Any other discussion, question? Please call the rule. Anderson?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
To Hill?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Yes.
So, Weston, okay, great, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Move by To Hill?
Second.
Second by Flornoy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Great, thank you very much. Meeting adjourned at 9:25.